Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the regular session of the Orange County Legislature dated Thursday, September 1st, 2022. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order and remind all of you to please silence your cell phones and turn off your electronic devices. And I would ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you all very much, and we would go to roll call. Carrie?
Fagion?
Here.
Paduk?
Here.
Amo?
Here.
Anagastakis?
Present.
Benton?
Here.
Breschak?
Here.
Cheney?
Here.
Ellers?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Luhon?
Present.
Menuda?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ramos?
Present.
Ruskovich?
Here.
Sassi?
Sierra?
DeGanga?
Sutherland?
Here.
Wotel?
Here.
Tui?
Vennelli?
Here.
Okay, we're going to start off this afternoon's meeting with some recognition awards. The first one is going to be a proclamation for prostate cancer awareness, and then we will be followed by a proclamation in regard to Sheriff's Week, which is September 13th through the 24th. At this time, I would ask my party leaders, both Majority Leader Fagion and Minority Leader Paduk, to please join me up at the podium. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and as I said, we do have the two proclamations this afternoon. We had the opportunity at one of our meetings this past week or this past month in regard to two individuals that visited us, Louis Abramson and his wife Karen. Did you want to come up and join us? And they enlightened the committee members that were present that day in regard to all of the things that they've been doing with the organizations that they work for as far as prostate awareness. So we felt it only fitting that September being Prostate Awareness Month that we would do a proclamation for their organization and help with the awareness of this very, very difficult disease. So I'm going to let Minority Leader Paduk have a few words because I know he jotted down some data, so we'll let him speak first.
Hi. I'd just like to mention how important this is, this resolution, in addressing this. And I'll just have a bunch of facts here so that this really brings to light why there's such a need for prostate awareness. There's more than 3,100,000 men in the United States are living with prostate cancer. One in eight men in the United States will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetimes, and one in 41 men in the United States will die from prostate cancer. Prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed non-skin cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men in the United States. The American Cancer Society estimates that in 2022, 2,68490 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, and about 34,500 of them will die. Forty percent of newly diagnosed prostate cancer cases occur in men under 65. The odds of developing prostate cancer rise rapidly after the age of 50. African-Americans have a greater risk of prostate cancer and is also more likely to be aggressive or advanced with black individuals. Having a father or brother with prostate cancer more than doubles the risk of a man developing prostate cancer, with a higher risk of men who have a brother with the disease and a higher risk of men with several affected relatives. Screening by a digital rectal examination and a prostate-specific antigen body test, PSA, can detect the disease at the earlier, more treatable stages, which could increase the chance of survival for more than five years to nearly 100%. Men 40 years and older should have a conversation with their medical provider about PSA testing and other health exams that are available. Only 30% of men survive more than five years if diagnosed with prostate cancer after the cancer has metastasized. There are typically no noticeable symptoms of prostate cancer in the early stages, making appropriate screening critical. Ongoing research promises further improvements in prostate cancer prevention, early detention treatment, and whereas educating people, including healthcare providers, about prostate cancer and early detection strategies is crucial to saving lives of men and preserving and protecting families.
Thank you very, very much. Majority Leader Fagion, did you want to just say anything before we pass it off to Mr. Abramson?
I just want to thank you guys for bringing awareness through committee and here today, and your relentless efforts in our communities are paying off in dividends. And listen to this gentleman, listen to what he has here for us today, and these things are very important, so I'm grateful to stand here with you, and God bless you, my friend.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to have Mr. Abramson, who actually is a prostate cancer survivor, say a few words, and then we'll present you with his proclamation. Thank you.
I want to thank all the legislators, the county itself, and everybody that's been able to show up today. Today is September. It's National Prostate Cancer Month. Sixteen men. Every 16 minutes, men are dying from prostate cancer. If we had a stadium, we could fill the stadium up quite easily. I found out that I had cancer at age 40. So for many, they think that this is an old man's disease. It is not. That's why I formed CHJI, Cultivating Healing and Justice Initiative Support Services. And the reason why is because we're cultivating a change in this county. We're healing, and we're making justice for all these men that have died, and we're honoring them every day. And for those that are fighting cancer, they're not fighting alone. This is a cancer that tears down the masculinity of men. It brings division. It brings mental health into the frame. Many first responders are being succumbed by this cancer. Veterans are being succumbed to this cancer. This is not a cancer that cares about people's status or wealth or connections. It doesn't care. It doesn't care what sexual preference or religion or demographic you're coming from. And in our community here, I'm a first responder. I know that I got this through exposure. I know that there are many other men that when we come together and we share what is happening to us, it's a common theme: Who's going to get prostate cancer next? So with this, I say thank you to the legislators as well as the community. We've been working hard, bringing screening to the community, advocating for screening. Screening saves lives. If you are able to know of a illness like cancer early on, you have a better chance of winning. Men can win this battle, but this battle has to be taken on by not only the hospitals, organizations like us, but also by the legislators and our community leaders and our community in whole. There should be no reason why this is still a stigma and men are dying quietly on their own. One of the things that I was brought up was that we take care of each other's brothers, that we take care of our loved ones, our children. How a man is supposed to take care of the children, their loved ones, their community when they're no longer here? So thank you again, and I look forward to seeing the county, Orange County, who has always been a beacon, stepping up to continue to step up for prostate cancer awareness in September, every September, and then we continue to bring screening to our community and mental health services and support because we can save lives. I have gotten people that have come in of many demographics, and we've been able to help them and facilitate where they need. And thanks to hospitals like WCM Health Network, also Mount Sinai, Garnet, and other partners in the community who have been able to come up and do this fight with us. And thank you to all the legislators here today, and thank you to Chairman Pete Tui as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis. And on behalf of the entire Orange County Legislature, it's my distinct pleasure to present you and your colleagues with this proclamation dated September 1st, 2022. Thank you so much. I would ask at this time, legislator Kevin Hines, join us. He is the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, and we have a proclamation recognizing Sheriff's Week, which I believe is 18th through the 24th. Am I correct?
Correct.
Did I get that right? That was it, without even opening the proclamations. And I'm not going to attempt to read this whole thing, but I am going to say a few personal words. It's been a pleasure working with the sheriff's office for my, how long have we been here? 16 years? 13? 13 years? See, time goes by fast, doesn't it? And Kevin has done a remarkable job in cheering the Public Safety Commission and Committee, rather, and we both work very, very closely with the sheriff's department as well as the legislators. And it's only fitting that we stand here this afternoon, recognizing that Sheriff's Week is September 18th through the 24th. We are very proud of our sheriff's office. They are quite distinctive throughout the state of New York in their accreditation, and they've all worked very, very hard for it, and we're very proud of them, and we wanted to say that today. So Kevin, did you want to say a few words as well?
Yeah, it's something that's very important to honor, not only Sheriff DeBois, Undersheriff Jones, Deputy Undersheriff Wade, and Investigator Pascal are with us today, but the entire staff. I know if the sheriff was standing here, and I'm sure Undersheriff Jones will say it, he'll say it's not about him, it's about the men and women of the sheriff's office. He doesn't call it a department because he'd be mad about that, right? But our sheriff's office is relied on by every municipality in this county and others because they have that specialized training with the Special Operations Group. They go in and teach school safety, they go to every school district and teach the schools how to be safe and what's necessary to keep them safe. Anytime there's an incident that is a serious level, the sheriff's office is there because they have countywide jurisdiction, they have the training and the resources to support the local municipalities. Some of our small police agencies in the various towns might have one or two police officers on duty. Well, the sheriff's office can come in with a bunch of people and solve problems pretty quick. They have the special investigators to do all that work, they have the program where they teach the houses of worship how to be safe in these tough times that we're all dealing with. The state mandated a review, I think it was about two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, and I got to sit on that committee where every police agency had to be reviewed by the community and themselves. And at the sheriff's office, we didn't really have to change anything because they met every standard, they were ahead of the programs, and they did what was supposed to be done. They have every accreditation, both on the corrections side and on the sheriff's side, that you could possibly have, and that's very rare. So our sheriff's office is an elite operation, and I know as the legislature, we're very proud of all of them. So it's very easy to chair a committee when every month you see the sheriff's office and they come in and tell you the great work that they've done, and we can actually see it because they have examples of the work they did. And so congratulations and thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Did either one of you?
He said it all.
He said it all? Okay. All right. So that's very well. So now, Undersheriff, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I would like to thank the legislature and the 400,000 people in Orange County that they represent. On behalf of Carl DeBois, the sheriff, and 500 people that work in the sheriff's office, you know, we serve in five federal task forces, two county task forces. Going into this school year, we'll be in 32 school buildings around Orange County in addition to the everyday work that the deputies, investigators do, both in the civil process and criminal investigation and criminal enforcement. So Kevin is correct is that we are the most accredited police agency in this state and stand amongst the best in the country, and we are very proud of that. And the people that work with us and work for us know what standards we are expected to serve in and the ones we meet. He's also correct that we serve in other counties as well. We've assisted Olson County, Sullivan County, and Rockland County in our Special Operations Group, and they're one of the most elite forces in this state able to execute federal warrants, which is very rare for a local police agency. And so that's been accomplished over a long period of time. We're very happy to accept this proclamation. It'll be displayed proudly in our lobby throughout the month of September.
Thank you very, very much. And without further ado, I do present this proclamation to you and the entire sheriff's department office. Look at that, I did that. I know, I just did that.
We started on our patches to make it easier.
But it really is our pleasure, and we're very happy to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fagion. Well, thank you all very, very much, and it was an honor to do these presentations this afternoon. At this point, I believe we do have one individual that signed up for public comment. I'd like to call to the podium, Animal Yuz, and this is in regarding to a tax deed sale.
Thank you for recognizing. Is this on? Okay. Thank you, Chairwoman. The tax deed sales that go on, there's a list, it gets bigger and bigger all the time, and there's things that are in hangover, let's say, that have been on. The redeem list for years. I live in the town of Newburgh in Middlehope, and there's two close to me. One of them's a 25 by 25, and the other one's a very small parcel. Of course, you can't do anything with it, you can't build on it or anything else, but yet the county continues to advertise and try to get rid of it. Now, I know that the law says that you guys have the ability to recommend to the closest landowner to absorb that property to their land. Now, let's take the 25 by 25. There's three parcels around it. A guy might be able to grow a few tomato plants there, but when you advertise it for 25 years, year after year, and you pay a grand a year and pay the taxes on it, and there's 400 of these things across the county, that's a hell of a lot of money. A hell of a lot of money because you're paying the school tax, you're paying the land tax, the county, state, and everything else. I urge your property manage group to look at these parcels, and instead of just advertising them and letting them float, some of them are on the books for 30 years. I'm not exaggerating this. There's a hell of a lot of money that's wrapped up, that's our money, taxpayer money, that shouldn't be paid out for the realtors, the advertising, the gavel, and the auction and all that. Let's get it to the next closest parcel owner that can do something, whether it can stop this ridiculous thing that's going on. That's what I wanted to get across. A lot of the people don't even know that it exists. A lot of the people that don't get the opportunity to sit on those committees that can recommend to go into the next closest parcel owner are unbeknown to this problem. If you do the math on it, I think you'll be shocked at how much money we're spending for no reason at all. Thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Yuz. Are there any consents?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Majority Leader.
Please accept items 36 through 41 on today's agenda as consent items.
If there are no objections, these items will be accepted to the agenda. Again, Majority Leader Fagion.
Madam Chair, I move to vote collectively on consent items number 36 through 41.
There are no objections, these items will be voted on collectively. And we start with item number one.
Legislators Ruskovich, Steganga, and all Republicans as co-sponsors, resolution of the Orange County Legislature confirming the appointments by the Chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Any questions or comments? All right, then I would ask that the roll be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagastakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassi? Sutherland? Wotel? Vennelli? Eighteen ice.
Number two, please.
Legislators Steganga and Sassi, with all co-sponsors, Republicans, resolution of the Orange County Legislature confirming the appointments by the Chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature to the Orange County Funding Corporation. Local development corporation authorized pursuant to Section 1411 of the New York State Not-for-Profit Corporation Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? May I ask the roll to be called, please?
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk? Amo? Anagastakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassi? Sutherland? Wotel? Vennelli? Eighteen ice.
Number three.
Legislators Sassi and Steganga, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 county budget for the Division of Tourism for a marketing campaign.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? Minority Leader Paduk?
Thank you, Chairwoman. When we had this special meeting regarding this additional $500,000 to add to the budget, there were some concerns that were brought up. This is being brought to us now when budget time starts next month. They're asking for another half a million dollars, and they already have a budget planned for this year. They brought to our attention that they've done a great job with the money they've been allotted. As a matter of fact, I think there's been a 32%, if I remember correctly, increase in revenues from how they've used the $500,000. So now I don't know for sure if that $500,000 has been used up, but they want this $500,000 to go from the fall till through December. I asked in committee as well, budget time is coming in October, are you going to be asking for more on top of this? And I was told yes. So for me right now, I think this is a, I'm not going to support this today because they've been doing a great job with the money they've been budgeted for this year, and if they wanted to get additional money for the budget for next year, I'd probably be more, I'd probably be supportive of it when I heard their programs. Now, they went through a whole, how they were going to do it, how they were going to spend it on, and some of the things there, I'm very concerned about. So I know there are other concerns out there in regards to coming in at the end of the year, asking for money for the fall and winter, when in fact, we won't know any of the results until sometime next year. So when we do the budget this year, the extra $500, we give them now, however much they ask for next year, which they said will be more on top of that, I'm not ready to spend $500,000 on a budget that's been doing a great job already this year. So I'm going to be a no vote. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Any other comments? Legislators Ramos?
So during ENE, I was a yes vote, but I will be voting no today as well. And that's because after further consideration and discussion, I have concerns over the execution of the plan. I understand what tourism is aiming to do with the $500,000 that they're requesting and that they're trying to go heavy with digital, and they mentioned some billboard on the highways and a lot of online stuff, some radio stuff. But I agree that I'm not sure that this is the most timely request when we do have budget requests coming up, as well as I just don't, I was not able to really get a clear understanding on exactly how this was going to be executed and what was the actual plan to spend down this money in such a short amount of time. It's a very aggressive plan, and there was no way or no plan or no discussion around evaluation or how the success of this campaign would be actually measured when that question was brought up either. And so if you're requesting half a million dollars, you should have a way to be able to assess the success of this campaign that you're doing, you know, in other counties and other states, and so I will also be voting no today.
Thank you for your comments. Majority Leader Fagion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to remind my colleagues that during the presentation, it was made fully aware that the funding from this appropriation is coming from the benefits of the hotel-motel tax here in Orange County, which has exceeded expectation in a positive way. Our economy is driven by so many of our small businesses and our industry here in Orange County, and tourism is a key component throughout our region and especially here in Orange County. I was very pleased to hear that it's the hotel and motel tax that's driving this by. I was reluctant at first, but I will say that the presentation was powerful, it was organized, and it really laid out a framework of where these monies will go, so I ask my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Legislator Amo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Paduk's argument was quite compelling, and so I'm going to not support this resolution. I think the concern is the timing, at least for me. The budget process is a rigorous process, a process where we look at how we're going to spend our money, and it seems to me that's where it should be. Unless there's a real dire need, if somebody is saying if we don't have this now, something terrible will happen to Orange County, I think we can wait till the budget process goes through and put it in the budget next year. So I'm a no.
Legislator Ruskovich?
Yeah, I have to agree with Majority Leader Fagion. The presentation that tourism gave at ENE was very thorough and very detailed as to what they're going to do with this money and how it's going to be spent. And, you know, as you mentioned, this funding is coming from the hotel-motel tax. It'd be put back into tourism, and by doing that, this will generate more both hotel-motel tax as well as sales tax. So based on all that, I'm very confident that, you know, this plan is going to pay for itself.
Thank you. Legislator Anagastakis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't sure how I was going to go on this. I had questions because I was not part of that committee, and I didn't get the information. But I agree with my other colleague that the minority leader made compelling arguments. And what I heard him say was that they did an excellent job. What I heard him say was they did outstanding work with the money they had. What I heard- What I heard him say was that they had 32% increase in revenues, I assume, based on the monies they had. So when they're coming back asking for more, I will support them based on what I heard that they have done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Menuda, did you have your hand up? Thank you.
Yes, Chairwoman, thank you so much. So anyone who cares to view the video that was taken from the Education Economic Development Meeting would know that these items were answered. It was a very robust conversation, where the money's coming from, how the money will be used, the sectors in which the money will be used, what the timing looks like as far as commercial time, where, what type of commercials, whether they're TV, or radio, or clicks on the internet. I felt very comfortable, and I know that the committee did, in bringing this to the floor today. So based on those items and the fact that success breeds success, we are in a very good position to be able to test this out so that when we look at our marketing, excuse me, not marketing, our budget for next year, this will be proof in the pudding as to whether we should go forward or not with monies that are in excess of what we expected. So I would ask my colleagues to please vote for this. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that I would be remiss if I didn't point out that one of the things that I took away from the very good presentation that was done by Director of Tourism Mandedana, who happens to be with us this afternoon, thank you for joining us, was that they were trying to capitalize on the fall market. And I don't know about all of you, but I think the fall in Orange County is one of the most beautiful seasons there is, and we do get a lot of tourism there. If we wait to capture that market, it's going to be another year. So I think what they're trying to do is to be able to jump on that and enhance their good fortune in doing a great promotional job for Orange County as it relates to tourism. And I just wanted to be able to point that out. And I'm sorry, as I was starting to speak, legislator Luhon's hand went up. Did you want to say anything, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the time. Just very briefly, I want to echo the sentiments of Minority Leader, Legislator Amo and Legislator Ramos. You know, again, this is, this is a, you know, one month away from budget, and I do recognize what they're trying to do. I understand that it's, you know, they're trying to boost tourism in the fall, and, you know, but again, we're one month away. And I would have liked, and I did feel that the presentation was good, but there were still some questions about measurements. Some of those measurements, we won't really know about the effectiveness of them until, you know, a couple of months from now. Half a million dollars is not, is not, is not something small, right? So considering all the timely things that we have, especially as we're going into the budgets, I'd rather wait until next month. That's where I would stand on it. But, you know, had it been, had this come in next month, there's a very strong possibility I would support it, but for today, I'm going to be a no vote. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then I would ask the roll to be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
No.
Amo?
No.
Anagnostakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Bresch?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Ellers?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
No.
Ruskevich?
Yes.
Sassi?
Yes.
Sutherland?
No.
Finelli?
Yes.
Thirteen ice, five.
Number four, please.
Legislators Ruskevich, Amo, Fagion, Cheney, Hines, Stiganga, Paduk, and all, with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature proclaiming September 17, 2022 through September 23, 2022 as a Constitution week.
Do I have a second? Majority Leader Fagion, did you want to say a few words about this? I don't know if you want to read the whole thing, or you just want to speak to it.
Madam Chair, thank you. It's self-explanatory, as written. I just would like to remind my colleagues, and I know they always get a laugh out of this, that no meeting goes without my Constitution. Without this, without this, there is nothing here in this country. The Constitution is our framework. It is the guideline that makes America the imperfect but very great nation that it is. And for all of the people in the audience today, out of the goodness of my wallet, I have some extra copies of the pocket Constitution up there for you. They are free for you to take, and I hope that you would enjoy them as much as I enjoy mine. And I will leave my colleagues with this, and it is a quote that I've used often in committee meetings, and it's a quote by a guy you might remember. His name is G. Dub, George Washington. "The Constitution is the guide which I will never abandon." And so I thank you all for recognizing this, and it is, of course, with great pleasure that I see this will be passed unanimously, I hope. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further comments? Then I would ask the roll to be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Bresch? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskevich? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Finelli? Eighteen ice.
Number five.
Legislators Ruskevich, Amo, Fagion, Cheney, Hines, Stiganga, Paduk, with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature designated September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Second. I believe that this is something that we have for us because we did entertain it in committee, and I believe Minority Leader has already read from this in our presentation of the proclamation. Did you want to add anything?
Actually, Madam Chair, I didn't do the resolve. I saved it for now.
Oh, okay.
So the resolve is that Orange County Legislature designates September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and declares that such steps should be taken to raise awareness about the importance of screening methods for and treatment of prostate cancer, and to continue to consider ways to improve access to and the quality of healthcare services for detecting and testing prostate cancer, treating prostate cancer. The Orange County Legislature calls on the people of Orange County, interest groups, affected persons, to promote awareness of prostate cancer, to take an active role in the fight to end this devastating effect of prostate cancer on individuals and families, and to observe Prostate Cancer Awareness Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Legislator Bresch, did you push your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank Mr. Abrams, he's gone, I guess.
Gone, yeah.
Okay, but I'd like to thank him and your agency for all you do, educating the public about this affliction. Three years ago, when I was 57, I was diagnosed with prostate cancer, and luckily, I had early detection, and I did the PSA like I was supposed to, and the biopsy, and the MRI, and the whole nine yards. And legislator Amo hooked me up with a specialist at New York Langone, and a few months ago, I was, I was retested and cancer-free. So I thank, I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you.
I'm still going to be here for a little bit longer. And also, my father was diagnosed with prostate cancer, and he passed away 11 years after the onset, you know, from another cancer that was metastasized. But I can't thank you enough for what you do to educate the public. It's a, you know, it's not the immediate death sentence that it was 35 to 40 years ago. You remember actors like Bill Bixby got it, and he was gone in a short amount of time. And there's so many options out there, and if people don't, you know, people don't know what those options are, they don't get the help that they need. So thank you for all you do. I really appreciate that, and I support you 100%.
We thank you on behalf of the Abramsons, as well as their organization, and being on board with them to help them move forward. Thank you.
All the way.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? All right. I believe we have to do the roll call.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Bresch? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskevich? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Finelli? Eighteen ice.
Number six, please.
Legislators Ruskevich, Amo, Fagion, Cheney, Hines, Stiganga, Paduk, with all Republicans, legislator Luhon, legislator Toatelle as co-sponsors. Resolution recognizing September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022 as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second. At this time, I would ask legislator Luhon to please read this resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my great honor to read the following resolution. Resolution recognizing September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. So the resolution recognizing September 15, 2022, hasta octubre 15, 2022, como el mes hispano, y de identidad hispana. Whereas, America's cultural diversity has always been a great strength of our nation. Throughout our history, Hispanic Americans have enriched the American way of life, and we recognize the millions of Hispanic Americans who love, whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as a people and to sustain us as a nation. And whereas, in 1968, Congress authorized, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week. This observance was expanded in 1988 to a month-long celebration to honor this nation's Hispanic heritage. During this month, Americans celebrate the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, and the countries of Central and South America and the Caribbean. This year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, encourages us to encourage that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and in turn, a stronger nation. Hispanics serve as civil rights leaders, politicians, military, educators, first responders, service pioneers, and public servants. Individuals who have contributed to the history of our nation include Ilda Solis, Department of Labor former secretary, Sonia Sormeyer, Associate Justice for the Supreme Court of the United States, Julian Castro, Housing and Urban Development Forum and former secretary, Sylvia Mendez, who paved the way for school desegregation and U.S. prerequisite to Brown versus education, Roberto Clemente, baseball trailblazer, Rodolfo Gonzalez, poet and champion of the Chicano movement, Franklin Chang Diaz, astronaut, Albert Bates, co-inventor of the X-ray microscope, Luis Minos Marin, the first democratically elected governor of Puerto Rico, Dr. Alfredo Quinones Jintosa, neurosurgeon, author, researcher, and chair of the Department of Neurological Surgery at Mayo Clinic, and Oscar De La Hoya, boxing champion, and Fernando Valdez, U.S. Olympian and boxing champion. Now, therefore be it hereby resolved that the Orange County Legislature recognizes September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month for the Orange County. And we commend these sentiments to every citizen of Orange County that all might reflect upon the great accomplishments of Hispanic Americans in our society. Felicidades. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Luhon. Any other comments or questions? Then I would ask the roll to be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Bresch? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskevich? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Finelli? Eighteen ice.
Number seven, please.
Legislators Paduk and Hines, with all Republicans, Luhon, Toatelle as co-sponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature pursuant to the New York State Constitution, Article 9, a municipal home rule law, Section 40, sending a home rule request to the New York State Legislature in support of legislation amending general municipal law and the tax law in relation to including the County of Orange within the definition of a designated community under the Hudson Valley Community Preservation Act of 2007.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, under that, we'll do a roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Bresch? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskevich? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Finelli? Eighteen ice.
And we move on to number eight.
Legislators Sassi, Fagion, with all Republicans, Luhon, Toatelle as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County District Attorney's Office to accept and appropriate grant funds from the nodulatory authority of the State of New York for the State and Municipal Facilities Program grant.
Second.
All right, this is a voice vote. So are there any questions or comments? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, the motion is carried, and we move on to number nine.
Legislators Fagion and Stiganga, with all Republicans and Luhon as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept and appropriate funds from the State Criminal Aliens Assistance Program pursuant to Section 99H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Here again, this is a voice vote, so all in favor signify. Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 10, please.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Fagion, Sassi, Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services and Police Services to accept and appropriate grant fund from the State of New York Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for the 2023 Traffic Safety Program.
Second.
This is also a voice vote. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 11.
Legislators Tui and Ramos. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Commissioner of Public Works to contract with certain towns and villages for snow and ice control on certain county roads.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote, so please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Bresch? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskevich? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Finelli? Eighteen ice.
Number 12, please.
Legislators Tui and Paduk. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, with respect to the Gaimard Bridge scour protection project in the town of Deer Park, and making a preliminary determination that this project be classified as an unlisted action.
Second.
This is a voice vote, so are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move to number 13.
Legislators Bresch and Ruskevich. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, with respect to the replacement of Jessup Switch Bridge in the town of Goshen, and making a preliminary determination that this project be classified as an unlisted action.
Second.
Questions, comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we move on to number fourteen, please.
Legislators Ruskavage and Benton, resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, with respect to the replacement of Pumpkin Swamp Bridge in the town of Goshen, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Questions, comments? Here again, this is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number fifteen, please. And this is a two-thirds vote and it will be roll call.
Legislators Ruskavage, Benton, O'Donnell, and Cheney, with all Republicans, Lujan as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the preparation of surveys, preliminary, and detailed plans, specifications, and estimates necessary for the replacement of the county-owned Jessup Switch Bridge in the town of Goshen, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $50,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $50,000 bond of the county to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
And we move on to number sixteen, which is also another bond resolution for a two-thirds vote.
Legislators Ruskavage, Breschah, Benton, O'Donnell, and Cheney, with all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Amending bond resolution dated September first, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, amending the bond resolution adopted June sixth, 2019 in relation to financing the replacement of Pumpkin Swamp Bridge in the town of Goshen at the total estimated cost of $1,875,000.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
And moving on to number seventeen. And again, this is a bond resolution which would require a two-thirds vote.
Legislators Breschah, Tui, and Benton, with all Republicans and Toatelle as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of alterations and improvements to Transfer Station Number Three in the city of Port Jervis, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $150,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $150,000 bond of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
Okay, number eighteen.
Legislators Paduk, Tui, Benton, and Anagnostakis, with all Republicans and Toatelle as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Public Works to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on behalf of the U.S. Army.
Second.
All right, this is going to be a voice vote, but any questions or comments? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number nineteen, please.
Legislators Benton, Breschah, Cheney, with all Republicans, Lujan, and Toatelle as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for playground equipment.
Second.
Questions, comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Oh, I'm sorry, this was a roll call. I stand corrected.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
And number twenty.
Legislators Breschah, Tui, and Benton, with all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for paving at various parks locations.
Second.
Questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
Number twenty-one, please.
Legislators Tui, Ramos, Benton, and Toatelle, with all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for parks equipment.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
Number twenty-two. It should be noted that these past resolutions that were doing voice votes are, the roll call on, is from surplus money from twenty-one surpluses. So that's why you don't see it as bonding and two-thirds vote. Number twenty-two.
Legislators Cheney, Tui, Benton, and O'Donnell, with all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for golf equipment.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
And we move on to number twenty-three.
Legislators Tui, Ramos, Benton, Paduk, and Breschah, with all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for a new pavilion at the Arboretum in Thomasville Memorial Park.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, my minority leader, you're right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of concern that's been discussed in Physical Services Committee, et cetera, in regards to this surplus money that we're spending. We have a bunch, I don't know the exact number, I probably should, of museums and historic buildings throughout Orange County. There's been surveys, we're looking to have surveys done to see what the needs are to upgrade them. The fact of the matter is, I question why haven't the licensed personnel, who are volunteers at these places, been updated on what their requirements are? Whether they have to pay for maintenance, et cetera, et cetera? They've told me that they're going to call a meeting for that now, but in fact, spending $600,000 at the Arboretum, in fact, the county does do the maintenance there, but doesn't do the maintenance at our other museums and parks? I'm a little concerned about why we're appropriating money without first having these meetings done where we could attend and listen to what their proposals are. It's very confusing to me when we have all this money because it's surplus from sales tax revenue from last year, that we just willy-nilly spend it on, spend it on different things throughout the county without getting input from the people who are actually running them. I mean, there's people there like, and I'll give you an example, Hillhold. This whole legislature, well, the prior legislature, went to Hillhold. There was a proposal for Amy Boelkris Center there. All the approvals have been given by the DEC, et cetera. However, there's a concern about maintenance in the agreements with the people that are licensed to be the volunteers there. That hasn't been addressed, so they're afraid that they won't have the money to do the maintenance that's going to be required by the county. And they're not sure what it would be, so before we go out spending all this money at different, like the Arboretum, which is a very beautiful place, I will admit, but we should make sure that the people that are running them know what their responsibilities are as well and actually fund some of the other needs at the other museums, like the chimneys. There's a lot of concerns here, and I think this should be addressed sooner than later before we spend the money. Let's let the people know that are running it what we're going to do and what their concerns are, and then spend it on the right things at those museums. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And as I said in committee, I just want to reiterate just for, to clarify the record, that in preparing with these resolutions, we did talk with the county executive's office and we are looking, or they are looking at the contracts that they have with the various different organizations. Because, well, practically all of them are outdated and need to be renewed, so you're right on point as far as negotiating with them and sitting down to get a plan in place as far as all of that is concerned. And that is being worked on, so just to let you know, as I just want to say it because I said it again in committee. So having said that, is there anything else? And if not, I will call the roll call.
Fagion?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Emo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hind? Lujan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskavage? Sassi? Sutherland? Toatelle? Benelli? Eighteen ice.
And we move on to number twenty-four.
Legislators Ramos, Ruskavage, Benton, Paduk, and all Republicans and Lujan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for various capital improvement to county museums.
Second.
Questions, comments? Legislator Menuda?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'm very happy that this resolution is before us, a link edition survey and assessment for these buildings as well as many other buildings throughout the county. Something that is very important to me and should be to all of us so that we know how to spend our money wisely going forward and understand what is needed. I would urge all of my fellow legislators to vote yes in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I will call the roll. Oh, I'm, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just along with what I just talked about in the other resolution, the county executive, deputy county executive was before, Sac Committee mentioned $3 million first, and then the next week it came back as the $300,000. And this $300,000, I agree, this should have been done way earlier this year so we could appropriate the amount of money needed for the repairs that are needed at our museums. This is actually just kicking the can down the road, where hopefully we find out what the needs are and hopefully we get the support to fund the needs to be, to make the improvements needed. So I guess we'll have to wait and see about that, but I'll support this to get this actually started. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Majority Leader Fagio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks, in committee, discussed the role of the county and also these museums as well as those who are co-volunteers and are participants in these individual groups. The one thing that he said that struck me was originally there was an ask of up to $3 million for capital improvements and stuff. And he said, you know what, without a proper assessment, who knows, we might need more. And if we come back in the future and ask for more, what happens if the legislature says, hey, you know what, we're not going to spend any more money? So this is actually the smartest use of the money is to, let's take this money, let's assess the assets we have, let's come up with an improvement plan that works, let's bring the stakeholders to the table, and let's have them have an honest discussion with the county in terms of where we are today and where we're going to go in the future. I would not say this is kicking the can down the road. This is the proper assessment of the assets that we have to make the proper investment and enhance and improve the history that we have here, because Orange County is blessed with history beyond compare, so I would ask that all my colleagues support this appropriation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Legislator Breschah?
Yeah, I have to agree with minority leader Paduk. He and I have been just as vocal, each of us has been just as vocal on this issue. And the plan should have been presented in August, and we are kicking the can down the road, whether we like it or not, that's exactly what we're doing. The deputy county executive went around and did the tour, we should have had a plan in August. And now we're talking about, we have to have a plan, we have to have a plan. We're just, you know, we're delaying, delaying, delaying. We know we need improvements at Hillhold, we know we need improvements at Brick House and in your district, my majority leader, excuse me, Fagion. You know, and I don't agree with the Commissioner of Parks that we should use, have the Friends of Hillhold and other groups pay for maintenance. He talked to me a few years ago about this down in New York City with Central Park and other big parks, but those parks have huge endowments. We don't. I could see that money being used from the Friends of Hillhold on physical improvements, not on maintenance. We should be doing the maintenance. That's why we have the parks. But let's, I would like to see something, Chairman Cheney, come to Physical Services for actual improvements and not wait, whether it's capital money or it's ARPA money or whatever money it is. $3 million was almost promised, almost promised. It wasn't a week ago, it was a month ago at one of the meetings. We need to do something. We need to move the needle, and we're not doing it.
Just in regard to the one comment you made as far as doing things, the few previous resolutions on the other page did have a lot to do with parks, so I just wanted to clarify that. We are moving forward with a lot of things. Maybe not as much as to be to your liking, but we are moving forward, so, but I understand what you're saying. Legislator Cheney?
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. The Physical Services Committee will be continuing to look into this. We're going to make sure that things that are done relative to the studies are done quickly and efficiently, and we will then be able to take under consideration any of those improvements that are required. Mr. Brooks is also committed to looking at the facilities at this point in time to make sure things are buttoned up for the winter so that no further deterioration of any of these properties occurs. And I think that the best plan moving forward is not to write a blank check for $3 million, but to give $300,000 so that $50,000 can be spent on a new boiler at one of the museums and the other $250,000 appropriately used by professionals who can assess the needs of those structures. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Cheney. Legislator Lujan, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share the sentiments of all the other legislators. I happen to have the second largest historic district outside of New York City, and so history is very, very important to me and very much a part of all of our history and all of our, you know, what we love here in Orange County. I do, you know, I rarely agree with legislator Breschah, but I do agree on this particular point that, you know, we can do more, but again, we have started, and the ball's going in the right direction. You know, $3 million might be a little bit, quite a lot, but I do feel that, you know, making sure that these buildings are maintained and that, you know, these clubs have the funds that they need to make sure that the building structure is sound, those are legitimate comments. We do not get, they don't get the kind of funding that places like New York City get, right? So I do think that it's great that legislator Cheney mentioned that we're going to be addressing this in a timely manner and that we're going to try to get those funds soon. I fully support it, and I hope that we'll continue to give more money to museums across the county. And just that personal plug again, City of New York also has, like I said, one of the largest historic districts in New York State, and we would love to see funds in that area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Legislator Menuda?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'm going to quote my structural professor from Pratt Institute, Y.S. Lee. Thinking without doing is useless, and doing without thinking is dangerous. Putting forth this money to do the appropriate evaluations by licensed professionals in their field of expertise so that we all understand what needs to be done is the right method and protocol for this. I realize some of my colleagues here might like to see the money spent more quickly, but this is the right procedure, and had this been done earlier, we wouldn't be discussing having it done now, but it's never too late, and here we are. So I, again, ask that you all vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who called the roll call, please?
Fagion?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Yes.
Hemo.
Yes.
Anagastakis. Benton. Breschah. Chaney. Ellers. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskavage. Sassy. Sutherland. Toatelle. Benelli. Eighteen ice. Thank you. We'll move on to number 25. Legislators Benton, Breschah, and Anagastakis, with Legislature Luhon as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the County of Orange to agree to an assignment of the contract for the sale of certain premises, premises located in Newburgh, New York, and the subsequent sale of said premises to the assignee based on the assignment of contract.
Second.
Questions, comments? Could I please call the roll? Fagiyo.
Yes.
Paduk. Hemo.
Breschah.
Anagastakis. Benton. Breschah. Chaney. Ellers. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ruskavage. Sassy. Sutherland. Toatelle. Benelli. Eighteen ice. Number A, 26. Legislators Luhon and O'Donnell. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create Deputy Commissioner of Emergency Services School Safety at the Orange County Department of Emergency Services.
Second.
Questions or comments? Minority Leader Paduk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a special meeting that we had in regards to this. It came up awful suddenly. We know how important school safety is. I would like to mention, though, that school safety, as important as it is, we have a Sheriff's Office which is top-notch, that already works with all the schools that want to have them worked with throughout the county. We're looking to hire a person to be in charge of it at 911, when in fact, there's a gentleman, I think his name is Mr. Lopez, who works for Bosse's, and he's in head of the school safety there. So, everything, any reports, any concerns the schools have, go through the state first. So, and there's a state policewoman that's in charge of schools. So, it's a little confusing to me, and some of the questions I asked at the committee meeting, they didn't have the answers for. Like, how many schools were involved? How many have requested being involved again now? So, I would make a proposal that if this is so important right now, which it is, which we're already doing, in all the schools that want it in Orange County, that we send it back to committee and get the full reasons why it was brought up so quickly, and, you know, discuss any other concerns that there might be, and get all the information first before we make a, so we can make an informed roll. So, I'll make a motion that we send it back to committee.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Breschah? All right, discussion on the motion. Legislature Luhon, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was also one of the legislators who supported that resolution, and I will say, after discussing it more with my colleagues, and also just based on some of the answers that were really not fully answered, I think that it's definitely worth having a greater discussion on it. We do have, you know, a Sheriff's Office who does this work. I think I heard that they, you know, they're pretty much in every single part of the county. You know, I don't want to see a duplication of services, if that's the situation, right? So, I just want to make sure that if we're going to be supporting, you know, moving forward with this position, that is one, that is not doing something that the Sheriff's Office is already doing. And I just want to be very clear about what that role is going to be. I think that that would, you know, further discussion would answer a lot of those questions for me. So, I will be supporting the resolution that has just been put on the floor. Thank you.
Legislature Benton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would also ask everyone to support sending this back to committee. I've heard about this first on Monday night at Republican Caucus, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to get into the Zoom meeting. I thought it was going to be a Teams meeting where I could have participated. But again, I view this position as being completely duplicative. If a school district wants to be involved, they know where they can go right now, because many of them have, they go to the Sheriff's Department. I don't believe this position should be taken away from the Sheriff's Department, even if we do make some adjustments and amendments that might be appropriate. It should stay under the Sheriff's Department. And I know particularly, in my local school district, I believe it's, you know, maybe an unwritten policy of the school district, that they don't want officers in school because they don't want officers have to see too much. So, I support this going back to committee. Thank you.
Legislature O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and also thank you for calling the special committee. I was unable to make the regular PNC committee because of the death of my sister. But thank you for calling that special committee meeting, appreciate it. Thank you, Majority Leader Fagiyo, for thanking everybody for attending that meeting. Where do I begin with this? I could quote Legislature Hemo when he referenced, "There's no dire need for $500,000 for tourism because we've got the budget coming up." Well, I can make the argument, there is a dire need for this position right now. Some schools open today, and most schools will be open on Monday. So, there is a dire need for this, all right? Minority Leader Paduk mentioned kicking the can down the road. Well, that's exactly what would happen today if you send this back to committee. You will be kicking it, the can, down the road. I spoke Atlanta at the committee, the special committee meeting, was there to answer any questions. I went through a few of my credentials, I won't repeat them again, but most of you, if not all of you, know my background in law enforcement. There's no, I'm an expert in school safety. This is not a duplication of services, all right? This is a position that will review, recommend, and execute their recommendations, their plans. They will coordinate with every school district will be involved, which I stated at the special committee meeting, all right? I think we've already approved over $7 million in county funds already today. This position will be $200,000, all right? Legislature Fagiyo mentioned the imperfect constitution of this great country, all right? I tell you today, imperfect action is far better than perfect inaction. To wait to send it back to committee, trust me, you will not get any further information. You will not get anything from the Sheriff's Office about what they do. All of that work is voluntary. This is something, as a legislature, we can do. There's very little we can do as a legislature to assist the schools, to assist the schools today. They're opening today. You drive by any school district, all right? Tuesday of this week, the administration of the Newburgh School District met at the Newburgh Armory Unity Center. I attended it with Mr. Kaplan and a few others. On the screen of their PowerPoint, the first item on the screen, "School Safety." Legislature Sassy has also talked about, that's the number-one priority of every school district this year. Is this position going to be the all-end? Probably not. But we, as a legislature, this is something we can do. We can't wait, all right? We can't wait for something to happen. It's going to take at least a month to hire somebody, all right? And it's an added layer. It's not a duplication, it's not a replacement of anything that's being done now. It's something we have to ask ourselves, and it's pretty easy when we're talking about, what can we do for our teachers? What can we do for our students? What can we do for our parents to help relieve them just a tiny bit when they put their six-year-old on a school bus, wondering if he or she is going to be safe today? Have we done everything we possibly can do? Okay? I say to everyone here today, this is just an added layer of that security, an added measure of doing everything we possibly can do. And for $200,000 of an $800 million budget, it's not money. We talked a lot about money today. This is lives. This is a dire need today. We send things back to committee all the time. And if we did a history look at that, half of the things we sent back to committee never come back to us, never come back to us. We need this today. And it will take time for that person, he or she, to be hired and then get up to speed with everything going on in the schools. There's no reason to wait, it is not a duplication of services. There is a need to coordinate with the Crime Analysis Unit, which was created a number of years ago. If you look at the news every night, right? I think they said, "There's enough fentanyl that came across the border in the last six months that would kill every single one of us here in the United States." And now, they're making it in colorful tablets to confuse our most valuable asset, our children, all right? So, it's not just to prevent somebody coming in with violence on their mind, it's also a position that's going to help out stemming the tide of drugs. It's also a position that's going to help the teachers have a level of comfort that we are doing everything we possibly can to keep them safe, so they can concentrate back on teaching our children. You know, where, it was just in The Times yesterday or today, where our students, right, have lost, their reading and math level has gone back to 20 years ago. Because they were looking at a screen for two years. Well, tomorrow, or today, and Monday, they'll all be back not looking at a screen, they'll be back in school. And it's up to us to do everything we possibly can to keep them safe. Don't kick this down the road, it's not a duplication of services. It is a dire need to act today. There's absolutely no reason not to act today. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Legislature Toatelle, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. While the horrendous has happened in our schools throughout this country over and over again, and I understand Legislature O'Donnell's imperative for urgency, however, this is not a civil service position, from what I'm understanding. I was only able to catch a little portion of that special meeting that happened at 10:00 in the morning while I was trying to listen in while I was at work. And I think it is imperative, given what happened in Uvalde, that we get this exactly right. We define the duties, we define what needs to be done because it's not defined for us under civil service guidance. And I would hate to see us, while I understand urgency, I would hate to see us act in fear and in haste and get this wrong. So, for that reason, and that reason alone, I will support removing this back to committee. Thank you.
Legislature Benton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the first time, it's my opinion, this should go back to a joint meeting of personnel and public safety.
Okay, thank you. Legislature Hemo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hear all the comments that have been made, and I agree with the issue of focus on the problem we're having at schools, no doubt. Who could disagree with that? Or any of the other issues around safety that we, as a legislature, are concerned about? My concern is Deputy Commissioner of Emergency Services for school safety. This is a slippery slope we have to think about. Are we going to have Deputy Commissioner for church safety? Next, are we going to have Deputy Commissioner for? Deputy Commissioner for mall safety or entertainment, concert safety? I understand the issue here, but where are we going? I think we need to think about this and decide how broad this thing is going to be and what we're going to meet. Do we need a Deputy Commissioner? No doubt that the issue Mr. O'Donnell has made, points he made are relevant, they're very relevant. I signed into this legislature a number of years ago, probably when the Connecticut issue came, and the first thing, probably a week after that, we had proposals to create school safety money, and we were handing it out by the buckets, the schools, for school safety, and never did anybody look at what in fact the schools were already doing. When you did, you wondered, "Well, why are we giving every school X number of dollars when in fact, 10 schools are already doing it with their budget and money?" The ones that are are the ones that are going to pay. It takes some time to think about it. But this is important. It is a Deputy Commissioner. Thank you. I'm going to send it back to committee for the purpose to answer that question, is this the right approach?
Legislature Breschah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion should read, "Send to the committee in the first place, not back to committee." It never went to the proper oversight committee where it should have gone in the first place. I mean, we just thought about this a few days ago, not two or three weeks ago, or a few months ago? I mean, there's just, I mean, I voted for it at the special meeting, you know, you vote against it, it looks like you're against school safety, which is totally a farce. I mean, Valley Central School District just had extensive meetings with the Village of Maybrook, the Village of Montgomery, the Village of Wall, and the Town of Montgomery. And we've all placed SROs in those respective schools. And in fact, the Town of Montgomery hired a head of all school security and another individual for education of school safety. So, we have no, this is about the most vague resolution I've seen in a long time. There's just so many unanswered questions that should have been answered in committee. Chairman, Legislature Hines of the Public Safety Committee spoke extensively at the special meeting of all the resources in the Sheriff's Office, and there are many. We really didn't hear much from the Commissioner Brendan Casey. We didn't hear much from him. There's so many unanswered questions, and number one, the cost. Not just the cost to fill this position, which by the way, will never be filled in a month. It isn't even approved by Albany, which is going to take some time. There's just so many unanswered questions, unanswered questions about the resources that we already have in the county to provide this service. Let's just create another commissioner, or deputy commissioner, to take care of the problem and tell the school districts what they have to do. There are many school districts in the county, Joe Menuda, that aren't doing it properly, but there are many that do do it properly. I know the Village of Goshen Police covered the school districts here, and the Sheriff's Office, the deputy, or the undersheriff, rather, spoke about, "We cover 32 schools." And I see many of those officers when I'm around the county, and we do a good job at it. But this, so many things could be, you know, this is kind of ignoring the legislature, the process. You know, we couldn't do this a week or two earlier and go to public safety? I mean, come on here. It's just, it's a thing, you know, a month ago, a month ago, we talked about the gas tax, right? The savings that we should have done three months ago or four months ago. But we were the last one in the game, and I think it starts today for the last quarter on the gas tax, right? We had a million questions about that, some legislators did, a million questions. What's this going to cost the county? What's it going to cost the residents? What's this? Equations that we could never calculate, never calculate. I mean, we could come up with some close calculations, we'd never calculate. And here, we're bringing this forward without any facts or figures or anything, you know, in the name of school safety. It needs to be done the right way and discussed fully at PNC and public safety, not just forwarded here today in an expeditious way. Thank you.
Legislature Menuda.
Thank you, Chairwoman. We are all here, it's my opinion, that we are here to think about what we're doing before we take action. And this is not thinking without taking, and just taking action. I heard a lot of, you know, fearful discussion as to, you know, we should not also be making decisions in fear. We should be making intelligent decisions. There are multiple layers already. There are at least three that I have heard of as of today, and this would add another. I also, I also heard Legislature O'Donnell state that, you know, no new information would be coming, but I just received new information just in the last day. I had a discussion with my former position with Newburgh Larch City School District, and they in fact stated that they have onsite assessments well on their way across the district, and they specifically stated that Tony Weed was very supportive of us, and that they have created a liaison to law enforcement within the district. So, there is a lot of new information. I, this needs to go back to committee, and that's my take on it. Thank you.
Legislature Sassy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, fellow legislators. A lot of great comments and opinions, some I agree with, some I don't. Just a couple of things to keep in mind as we look at this, and we're moving this position forward, and Legislature O'Donnell threw out a figure, roughly $200,000, which certainly is a very small amount when it comes to safety. School safety is in fact the number-one issue, not only in our county and our state, but across the nation, where violence is on the rise. Defund the police, people are still out there trying to dismantle police departments and security systems, which is shameful. And acts of violence continue to be on the rise. Each school district, each police department, as we all know, they're fiefdoms of their own. They have their own rules, their own regulations, their own personalities, which is fine, all politics is local, but keep that in mind. Is there anyone examining all of those plans as we move forward? Are we, we need to ask ourselves this question. Are we, as a county, our schools, our police, ready to handle a serious emergency quickly, quickly and effectively? Are we? Can someone concretely answer that for me right now? Are we currently ready, 100% certain? I think you all know the answer. So, I'd like to see this move forward, and we will fine-tune it as it moves through the regular process. Timing is key, yes, you can argue, where did it come from? Legislature O'Donnell, in his defense, approached me on this back in June, I believe, to bring it to PNC. So, it has been working through the channels. County Executive is on board with this, others were, we voted unanimously the other day. If you want to stand on ceremony and protocol, that's fine, but ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you again, are we ready to handle a serious emergency quickly and effectively? I don't think you can answer that. I can. Thank you.
Legislature Ramos.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Ultimately, I think what I'm hearing from a lot of our colleagues is that we need more information to be able to make an informed decision. It doesn't feel like we would be able to make an informed decision right here at this time. I think we can all agree that school safety is a very important issue. It's a critical issue, not just on the local level, but on the national level, like it's been said, and an issue that we all care about. But I don't know that rushing this process or that a deputy commissioner would be able to prepare us for, you know, an unfortunate event from one moment to the next. So, I think that ultimately, this needs to be more informed. I think there's a lot of questions here that we want to ultimately be able to understand the validity of this proposed position and the impact it'll have. Because while we all have and we all support school safety, I don't know that we can have and we all support school safety, I don't know that we can put all the onus on one person or one position to bring school safety across the entire county and all the school districts in the county. And I'm not saying that that's the understanding or that that's the expectation, but it's going to take a lot more than a deputy commissioner, it's going to take, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know who said it, but analyzing our resources that are already existing in the county. How can we uplift those resources, and how can we leverage the resources that are already existing in addition to perhaps a position such as this, once it's better informed? So I also would support this going to committee and going through the proper channels so that we can make a more informed decision.
Legislator Muhan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I started my original comment, I was a supporter of this, and I still remain a supporter of it. My, but as I'm sitting here, the more I listen to my fellow legislators, the more questions I have, and that's really what it comes down to. And I think Legislator Menuda, he summed it up, I think, probably perfectly, about making decisions out of fear. That is not something I intend to ever do. We have to be the body that speaks out of reason, and that listens and looks at the facts and analyzes even in the hardest of times. And so while I recognize that this is one of the most important, if not the most important issue for our region, and we want to protect, you know, our most valuable resources, must do it the right way. Has to be done, spending the money in a way that is going to be used in the most, you know, in a way that's going to be most beneficial. Maybe this position is that. Maybe this position somehow makes everything safe. To Legislator Ramos's point, I am a little skeptical about whether or not one commissioner would be able to do that. That being said, I'm very much open and want to hear that. I want to hear about what can be done with this. I also think Legislator Benton made a really great point about the fact that the sheriff's office, with the work that they're doing, perhaps we're increasing what some one of the sheriff's office members are already doing, instead of creating a completely new position. That being said, there are so many things that have been said in just a short amount of time, I think that we've discussed, you know, like I think everyone agrees, we want to make sure that we're protecting our children and our youth. And it comes down to just, let's have a deeper conversation about, and let's move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Legislator Hines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree with this, going back to committee, I do, that committee hopefully will have undersheriff Jones and deputy undersheriff Weed there to guide us through this. I think undersheriff, deputy undersheriff Weed is our expert on school safety, I believe, and maybe there's someone more qualified, that's who I think is the most qualified person in Orange County. Again, just my opinion, and he and his team have already gone to any school that has asked for a safety assessment. They go, they're happy to go, and they have a whole team that does that. I only found out, I guess, this morning from Legislator Ellers, that Mr. Lopez, who took over the special operations group when Tony Weed got promoted, is the director of safety at Bosse's, and his sole task is school safety throughout Orange County. So Bosse's has already taken this position, embraced it, and put the program in place. My next issue is the, we already have a deputy commissioner for police services in Orange County. Mr. Cherry is retired just recently. Whoever gets hired to that position can certainly fill this role in the interim while we explore whether or not we need another person or not, because that person will be a former police chief usually, who would be trained in a lot of these issues already. My biggest concern is, will the schools even let them in? Because Sheriff DeBois started a phenomenal program, putting armed sheriffs in every school that wanted one, and not every school district embraced it. Some chose to hire their own local police, some chose to do nothing, other than, because they didn't want any guns in school. I know in Monroe, they hired Joe Chapoto, a senior commander from the state police, to run the whole operation there. So I don't know that they would need this assistance. So we can't make the school districts embrace any program we develop because we don't have the authority to do that. So even if we hire a superhero, or whatever this person is going to be, will the schools embrace him? I don't know. I guess it depends on he or she's presentation to the schools, whether or not they like him. But whoever it is, is going to have to be more qualified than Tony Weed, because the schools that want that service have already embraced him. So I do think we have time, schools start on Tuesday. Commissioner Chapman, our director of HR, has already told us that if we do hire, create this position, it'll take months, because it has to go to Albany and be approved through the whole process. And that's when I, my fallback was, well, maybe because we have already an opening for a police deputy superintendent for, or a deputy commissioner, police liaison, that person could fill the role in the interim if this legislature chooses to go in that direction. And the other thing, I want to assure everybody in Orange County, are we prepared for every disaster? Absolutely not. But I think we are prepared to the extent we can be. And the reason I say that is, I sit on the police advisory board, and that's a group of police chiefs, I'm the only one who's not a police officer on the whole committee, and the sheriff's office was there, the county executive tasked us about two and a half years ago to write a white paper, and that white paper would be what to do in the instance of a school shooting, for instance. It didn't address the drug issue, but in a school shooting. And what happened, what would happen in Orange County? It would not be what happened in Valde, because every police officer in Orange County and every school district in Orange County got a copy of that. And what it said is, as soon as the police officer arrives, you eliminate the threat. You don't stand around like Evaldi and gather around and hold hands and try to figure out what you're going to do. The first officer that arrives goes in and kills the threat. If he or she's not successful, the second one goes in, and it might take 20, but that's the plan that we have here in Orange County. And I know the two undersheriffs are sitting back there, and I'm sure they'd love to comment on this, but they certainly know that, and they know that every police officer in Orange County is trained to do just that. So those of you that are sending your children to school on Tuesday, take a little comfort in that. Can we promise your kids absolute bubbles around them? No. But I think our local police are very well trained on this particular aspect. And hearing from Commissioner Casey, we haven't heard a word from him on this yet, and we haven't heard from the sheriff's office on this yet, we haven't heard from Mr. Lopez, who's tasked with this at the county level through Bosse's. So I think it makes sense to take a minute, and we're not wasting time, because the county executive do it now with the deputy commissioner for police services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Legislator O'Donnell.
Well, I'll wait for Legislator Sullivan.
Legislator Sullivan? Ah, Sullivan. Excuse me, Sutherland.
I've been called worse, thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is really obviously quite, I'll say, a debate, a very healthy debate, I think, and I think it's also very true that obviously there's not one person in this room that doesn't support school safety, that doesn't believe that our local police forces, you know, I live in the town of Mount Hope, they are by far, in my humble opinion, one of the best. I don't think anybody's questioning that and what we can do moving forward. I do think though, that I have a pretty good feeling, being a school social worker, and I speak confidently when I say, if you were to poll every teacher in the country, no one is going to tell you, no teacher is going to tell you that they feel safe. I don't care what you have in place. I think if you were to poll most parents, they will tell you that they struggle with sending their children to school every day. I will tell you, as a school social worker, I struggle. I don't feel safe, and that has nothing to do with my police department, it has nothing to do with my school district, it's just something that I don't feel. I will also tell you that you have never seen anything like the terror in a child's face when they don't hear the word drill come after lockdown on the speaker. You have never seen anything like that, and I hope you don't. I know I unfortunately have seen it too many times, and it's, it's really horrific. I respect this going back to committee. I understand to the committees, to, I understand why that has been put forward and why it's being done, however, I will not support that. I will be voting to make this happen now. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to make a comment. This was a phenomenal discussion on something so, so important throughout our entire nation, and obviously here at home, it hits home really close. I think we're all trying to strive for the right thing and try to find what we are empowered to do, which is limited, but I think we need to exhaust every possibility we think that may be out there. And the possibility that came forth a while ago, the county executive had this meeting, I believe there were three or four legislators that were present, and it started to evolve. The discussion we had today was absolutely phenomenal, and I don't see why that discussion cannot continue either at the PNC committee, or the Public Safety Committee, or even the Rules Committee. You know, it's a lot of food for thought, but I don't think that we shouldn't investigate, because I think, and I believe it was Legislator Tortell that brought up as far as the competitive, what type of a classification. Well, we'll never know that until we get it to Albany. So I don't see, this is the first step in really committing to school safety for our children, and to get that, to get to Albany, to find out whether it's going to be a competitive petition, position, which you have to take a test for, we have to pick for the top three, that may not be something we want to do. Or it could be a non-competitive. The reason it was titled the deputy is because usually those are not, those are appointments. But we're not going to know that, and I would like to know that before we move forward. We may decide that this would be something that it's not going to work for us. At the end of the day, we may get it back, and we may turn around and say, you know what? We may have to hire a group that is professional in this manner in creating safe environments and looking at all of the school districts here in Orange County and working together. I think somebody else had said, we don't know how willing the schools are going to be towards all of this. But if we don't take the first step, which I think we're doing right now, we're not going to be addressing it at all. So I can understand, I wouldn't send this particular resolution back to committee, I would commit to further discussions at each and every committee, and still let this go, and let it send to Albany, and let's find out what, if this will work. It may not, but we will know unless we try. Just some food for thought. I will mention that I believe it was Legislator Benton that said something about two committees, so if somebody, if you want to amend to go back to, if that's how you want to change it, or...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'll amend that it goes back to Personnel and Public Safety Committees.
And I believe Benton was the one that seconded the motion, was that correct? Or was it Breschek? Then are you okay with that? Yes. Well, I don't know if it'll be joint or separate, that's, depends on schedule. Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Legislator Breschek.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So if I heard you correctly, you're asking us to move this forward and then let it go back through for further discussion.
I am asking that this be considered, to move this forward, and then commit to have discussions with these, with the various different committees that would be applicable, and get answers to all of these things. Have the sheriff's department come in, let's talk to them. Have any organization that can be, Bosse's. I mean, as I believe Legislator Hines mentioned, the individual that will be taking Weed's place is already working at Bosse's. Was that, was that correct? Did I get it?
Point of order?
Oh, okay.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Sorry, I didn't...
The motion is to send it back to both committees, it's not to vote, you know, that's the motion on the floor, not to, not to carry this forward right now. If that fails...
I'm just saying, that's my opinion, I'm not saying...
Okay.
No, that is definitely the motion.
You confused minority leader, myself, on that, so, okay.
That's, that's the, no, no, that is still the motion.
All right, so, I still have the floor, Chairwoman?
Yes.
Thank you. So I think what I'm hearing is to approve, to deny sending it back to committee, to approve the position, but the, I'm the chap, and send it up...
The motion on the floor currently, if I have it, and Betsy will correct me if I'm wrong...
Right, so I'm asking that...
Is to send it back to both physical, PNC, Personnel and Compensation, and Public Safety. It would be a yes or no vote to send it back to committee. My comments about trying to run parallel paths were not meant to confuse anybody, that's the vote right now.
Legislator Menuda.
We're not sending it back to committee, we're sending it to committee for the first time.
No, it was at PNC, and it passed out of PNC.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Right, so, I still have the floor?
Yes, you can have it back.
Thank you. So it passed unanimously out of committee, right? You're still, in my opinion, kicking it down the road. You could vote no against sending it back, create the position, and then have all the discussions you want, which are all valid, all right, and get what you want in the position. I already know what's needed, all right? We need a poster in every school district that says, see something, say something, do something, call 311. That's the mental health aspect of this, all right? Legislator Hines already mentioned that the drug aspect of this is not even mentioned in the white paper, all right? Neither is the mental health piece of it. That deals strictly with the police reaction to a violent person at the school. It's that white paper, all right, which is important. But there's a lot more to school safety than just a violent person going through the front door, the side door, whatever doors left open for that person, all right? The urgency here is that schools open, and this is one of the few things we can do as a legislature. So I'd ask all my colleagues to not send it back to committee, to create the position and move forward now. Thank you.
Any further comments?
No. I'm okay with the amended resolution for both committees, correct? Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call on the motion to send to the PNC and the Public Safety Committee.
Fagion?
No.
Du?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Nagnostakis?
No.
Benton?
Yes.
Breschek?
Yes.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Luhan?
Five.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos?
Yes.
Friskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tortell?
Yes.
Benelli?
No.
11 i's, 7 no's. We'll go to committee. Oh, no, now we have... All right, number 26. Legislators Menuda and Fagion, resolution authorizing an increase in the salary range for the position of autopsy assistant per diem at the Orange County Department of Health Medical Examiner's Office. Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Du?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Nagnostakis? Benton? Breschek? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos? Friskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? 17 i's, 1 no. All right, and we move on to number 27. Legislators Fagion and Benton, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to reclassify one autopsy assistant to senior autopsy assistant, real, reallocate autopsy assistant and create title autopsy assistant trainee at the Orange County Department of Health.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Du?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Nagnostakis? Benton? Breschek? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Friskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? 18 i's. We move on to number 28, please. Legislators Benton, Menuda, and Breschek, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create deputy commissioner of finance at the Orange County Department of Finance.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Seventeen ayes, one no. Okay, number 29. Legislators Fagion, Luhon, Breschak, and Tortell, an act amendment, amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to real, reallocate Deputy Budget Director, abolish Senior Budget Technician, and create Budget Technician at the Orange County Division of Budget.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Carrie? Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes. Number 30. Legislators Breschak, Menuda, Sassy, and Ramos, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish E-911 Systems Administrator and create Systems Integration Manager at the Orange County Department of Emergency Services.
Right.
Questions or comments? Legislator O'Donnell?
What's the financial impact on this? I'm trying to look it up. Are we saving money or spending money?
Spending.
Going from grade 15 to grade 23?
Spending. Thank you.
Any other further comments? Okay, call the roll, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Seventeen ayes, one no. Number 31. Legislators Luhon, Fagion, Stiganga, and Hines, with all Republicans, Luhon and Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature forming a committee on retention and recruitment.
Right.
Questions, comments? All right, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? And Benelli? Seventeen ayes, one no.
Before we move on, I would just like to thank the Director of Human Resources, Langdon Chapman, for bringing this idea forth. I mean, we all know that, here again, throughout the country, we are having a really difficult time with workforce, retaining workforce and recruiting individuals. And we've seen some of our people have retired, and sometimes they have taken jobs elsewhere. So we really want to get on board with this, address it as best as we possibly can. And this is our effort by forming this committee on retention and recruitment to address it in a very aggressive manner. So, thank you. And we move on to number 32.
Legislators Benton, Paduk, Tortell, with Legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to appropriate fourth-year budget period fund from the New York State Department of Health for the migrant health services program.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes. Number 33, please. Legislators Benton, Hines, and O'Donnell, with Legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Mental Health to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Office of Addiction Services and supports for jail-based medication-assisted treatment services.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes. Number 34, please, so this will be a voice vote. Legislators Cheney and O'Donnell, with Legislators Luhon and Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Planning to accept funds from the U.S. Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation for the Community Economic Adjustment Assistance for Responding to Threats to the Resilience of a Military Installation Grant.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move on to number 35. Legislators Benton and Hines, resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing the removal of parcels from the current delinquent tax sale list and upcoming property auction.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes. Okay, on number 36 through 41, we are voting on collectively, these are the cancellation of certain taxes that have been rendered unenforceable from, well, actually, it looks like it's all the town of Woodbury, so it's voted collectively through 36 through 41. Any questions or comments? So it is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. And we move on to number 41. Forty-two. I'm sorry, 42. Legislators Benton and Paduk, with all Republicans, Luhon and Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Finance to accept and appropriate funds from the United States Department of the Treasury.
Second.
Questions or comments? Yes, Minority Leader Paduk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is $2,593,541 of these funds to be put in contingency. These are funds that have to be used before the end of this year, 20...
No, I think it's, um...
23? 26?
Twenty-four, 26.
26. Okay, well, these funds in contingency...
These are the ARPA funding.
ARPA funding, yeah. These funds sitting in contingency, if we're not, if we don't use them, we have to give them back, just like any of the other funds that we receive from ARPA. We have a proposal for it, but not for that $2,593,000. And we were just talking about some things that we could spend some money on. So you know what? The legislature has a, a sort of control of making sure that if we need money for certain things, that we have it. And it's in contingency, so if there's a proposal for improvement at some parks facilities or museums, there's money available, so just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All right, then we'll call the roll call. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes.
And I would just, we're talking about that this was ARPA funding, and I really want to talk about the fact that both the Department of Finance, our Department of Finance, as well as the Budget Office, have done a remarkable job in working with all of the logistics. This is not an easy, easy task, to be able to acquire these funds. So they've done a remarkable job, and I want to thank them for all their efforts, and I see that both Commissioners or Directors are here, so, thank you.
Number 43, please. Legislators Benton and Nagustakis, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution accepting, amending, and reaffirming the Orange County Investment Policy.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ruskovich? Sassy? Sutherland? Tortell? Benelli? Eighteen ayes. And number 45. Legislators Benton and Nagustakis, resolution authorizing the private sale and conveyance of certain county-owned lands acquired by reason of a failure to redeem headlands from a tax sale to Orange County.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, but I ask you to call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Nagustakis? Benton? Breschak? Cheney? Ellers? Hines?[1455.38]